The next appointment that we had is for 7:30. This is 55-57 on Lawrence Street. And the owners have asked to be postponed to the next weekend.
August 19. August 19. Oh, August 19. So I don't think we'll be able to make this.
Grab and push them next week because of the time for... It would still be good if we could get these site command. No, no. Yeah, the time. I don't know if we'll be able to find a place. All right, very good.
The 19. The 19 is a farm? Autumn. Oh, yes, August. We're doing the bylaws by night.
So the next appointment that we had is for 7:30. This is 55-57 on Lawrence Street. And the owners have asked to be postponed to the next weekend.
One. One.
August 19.
A little month.
Yeah, five.
Oh, a little bit. We have a week.
Two weeks.
Okay. It's gonna be for the all the lighting and all that stuff that it's gonna be for.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you know if that's the same night that the ACA for... Were you not just going to be two like that? We don't just got four or two. We don't see any ACA. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what we're standing for.
Yeah. Is that right?
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, yeah. All right, you guys have a good night. Is that 7:30? Yeah. All right.
Actually, I think you have to check the agenda. There's a lot that night, so.
Okay. All right, you guys have a good night. Nice to see you.
Joanne, have you already announced the schedule? Schedule for time for 19?
I don't... I'm not sure if I have time.
So I don't know if I made a mistake putting the lock seven or something.
Um, I think I can. No, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we got a few minutes. We have some bills. Here we have some bills to pay.
The first one is for Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. Planning Board expense 01-175. There's not an invoice number. It was for A&R Plans. Joanne.
Yeah.
Hi. The A&R bill with that for Valar. Park Street.
So that was the zoning bylaw changes for... Maybe for...
Oh, this one is the Registry of Deeds A&R Plans. I'm gonna guess it's Valar.
Do you want to...
Oh, she was looking for an invoice number.
Yeah. No, don't worry, Joanne. It's not the Halifax Express. It's the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds.
Oh, that one too, I'm sorry.
But there was no invoice number in the bill.
And there's no ad rush corresponding.
Is that for the recording and signatures?
Yes.
It says A&R. I was wondering if it was Valar saying all the A&R plans.
No, but so we have to sign this in the registry report.
Oh, so we're paying that.
This is paid for that.
Right, I'm sorry. I was essentially when you were asking, I thought you were...
No worries. I just wanted to be clear on what we were signing.
Right, everybody needs to sign and you put registered that.
Okay. So this bill for $107 is to record the planning board members' signatures for the 2021.
Right.
Okay, a motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we all need to sign that so that that can be recorded.
Right, it's the one that's in the bill folder.
Yeah, we got it. Thank you. And then our next bill is planning board expense for WV Mason in the amount of $71.78.
A motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And the next bill is invoice number 12 size... Uh, sorry. 12654 for the Clinton Halifax Express. Public hearing adds zoning bylaw changes for 7:30 21 and 8:621 in the amount of $251.10. Have a motion to pay that.
A motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, yes.
All right?
Yep.
And do you want to make a motion for a second?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from May 6, 2021.
A motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes. As written.
A motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for June 3, 2021.
Okay, this motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for June 17, 2021 as written.
A motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you seeing that?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just making sure. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes, I think, for July 1, 2021.
A motion for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have to work hard now, I said.
John. Jill, the lady. Joanne, we can make correspondence from Bracken on Jill. About being...
Can you start about that?
Bracken just gonna come.
That's what I called you about. And when you said it was kind of... Oh, John, I'm sorry. I was thinking... As far as I know, he was coming.
Yeah, we didn't hear anything.
No, I didn't hear anything.
Okay. And then 415-175.
That was just the signature that he needed on that plan. See the roll sheet? We had one set in the file that was signed by three numbers. But he brought that at the last meeting. That was handled. And just he asked to have the signatures, have that signed. And he had those planned.
So we have three signatures on us.
Yeah, but Jonathan, Zorro, and Yan, I...
So, and I think you signed it.
I signed.
So you've signed that. And then Mark?
That's true. I think I wrote the names on it.
Uh, that would be Mark and Jonathan. Jonathan's on here.
Right.
Yeah, the Mark and Jonathan.
You didn't get them, did you, Valerie?
No, no. We have proposed a zoning bylaw change, Kirk, Kirk and Booth?
Yes.
Did you want to speak?
Sure.
Mr. Jerry, I want to ask a question. Well, they're not in discussion. And we should just assign them.
Okay, buddy. Over here. So my name is Carl Booth and I'm looking to cite a retail marijuana dispensary, cultivation and manufacturing facility at Fremont District. Currently, I'm not able to cite a dispensary anywhere in that area through the bylaw. But even say expensive for doing 500 linear feet of alcohol for organizing. Effectively, that sets up a ban in most of the central business districts of the town. Really amazing because there's a restaurant just about 10 miles. And so what I'm looking for is to get your support as planning board for a bylaw change. That location is by far the best location in town for marijuana dispensary. It's a fairly busy area. There's parking for 30 plus vehicles. It is not adjacent to residential. And I think that, you know, if it's with a deep side of either Walmart and the shop, it will be a high revenue producing tech house store. And with the high revenue producing store comes a 30 second community impact fee. Based off of my financial projections, we will be doing about $6 million per year out of the retail store and roughly $3 million per year in wholesale and manufactured goods, which will be roughly a $270,000 community impact fee to the town. And really, ultimately, what I'm looking for here is help from the planning board. And by help, it's really the support. I think it's by law what is crafted in ERK. It doesn't really make much sense, in my opinion. You know, because there are almost all the commercial business districts, but that by law essentially bans it from that district. So it's essentially... It's really negating itself. So what I'm asking for is the support from the planning board. And hopefully, I can get this bylaw changed.
And this is being proposed at this time?
Correct.
Town meeting?
Yes. Yeah, and I look forward to the opportunity to speak with the town, present myself, present my idea, and essentially become a member of the committee. I've been around a little bit. I've met with some police officers. I've met with some of the political officials in town. And I've met with people in the community. I've secured 195 signatures from registered residents of the town who are all that support in opening a dispensary right here. And I really felt really welcomed. Everyone I've met has been really accommodating and supportive of my initiative here. And I really just want an opportunity to succeed.
Discussion?
I think you said it all.
Yeah.
Just had more conversation about it, but... Fair enough. The details, right?
So I believe this is... Joanne, this is on the agenda for 19 credit for public hearing.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is we'll have a public hearing there. We'll debate at that point. And after that debate, the planning board votes whether or not they support it or they don't support. To make a recommendation in the town meeting. So, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we leave Matt Campbell here?
Yeah.
Sure, come on in.
My husband apologized for having his insects on business.
What? Show me the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you show me? We're on the morning hours? Yeah. Okay.
So my husband and I own, or I think he owns, the farm we work with, which is a choosing cut versus we run in Halifax. And we have been approached by people to have weddings, corporate events, any type of event that people are looking for open space. So from what we currently have lots that we're moving to company events we can have here that are outside our crop, per se, based on one fest and ramification bylaws. So we're looking to see if we can get the change so that other farms in the area can utilize their open space more than just for what they farm. We personally will be looking for more than 100 people at an event, a wedding, per se. Another hurdle would be, though, currently it says that no alcohol is served. Most corporate events, weddings, would have alcohol served. We'd be using a bar timing service that has licensing to...
His name's not...
Exactly. I think we... Some people I've talked to, they have 12C licensing. We need to make sure that those would be covered under the Halifax laws by us. Do you know what the steps were going forward or what we could do? Do we fall under this current rules and regulations for one fest? Do we fall under something else? So we're looking for guidance of what we can do. We want to go forward, keep a light open space. Especially right now, we have 30 acres to offer. So we wonder what our steps would be so we could extend them.
Have you spoken with a agricultural attorney on the rights under 61A?
No.
You should.
So until we go forward with that, there's nothing we can do to have?
No, but I would just think that that would be a great avenue because I'm a realtor and I still have farms in this under 61A. If you talk to people, there's great allowance for farmers to... What's the word? The word's not gonna come to me at this second in time. To enhance their ability to pay bills, have money come in. They're allowed to do certain things on their farm under 61A. What you're describing.
Because basically what you're asking for is to change the zoning bylaw, which would require either you to get a petition to get on the town meeting, at which time the planning board has to hold a hearing, just like the other gentleman was just here asking to change the bylaw.
Okay.
The planning board holds a public hearing for zoning bylaw changes. The discussion comes out of that. And then the board looks to recommend that or not recommend. Doesn't mean that that's not go or not go. But when you go to town meeting, that recommendation is brought out of the town meeting. And then the townspeople hold out which way they want.
So as far as I can understand, there's no agriculture zone bylaws in town right now?
Any what?
Agriculture?
Uh, no.
Not having the right to farm?
Well, not bylaws. 167, you know.
What's a zoning bylaw?
Agricultural.
Agricultural.
I suppose it's a neighborhood, it's a residential. So, question. What differs from people allowing, being allowed to hold the wedding on their own property? Like me as a resident, can I hold a... A bunch at my house? Serving alcohol? You go to the select kind of that. But due to the fact that on a farm, not a typical business, any business owner, that's what's limiting me.
This farm, Charlie says that is...
So if you can hold a wedding, it's their wedding on their own property. It's not a commercial activity. It would be considered an accessory use to the residents. And they can have alcohol there. The town doesn't regulate if you're alcohol licensing, if you're having a party on your property. But if you get into commercial, if you're selling a service, if you're leasing the property even for eight hours or four hours, then you're doing a commercial activity, which is different.
For your under 61A. Sorry, I arranged to look at the 61A laws because I believe that your assessment would reflect the 61A, correct? So I would look under those laws because that would be different. Okay.
Get that little vacuum when you come here. Then it's gonna be a lot further when we do the public hearing. If the attorney says it's all...
So, perfect. Thank you for the advice. You're welcome.
Walmart extended hours? I don't know if they can more, right?
You're gonna come from Farm Office, right?
Walmart?
Yes, well, there's you, right? Is that right?
Did they hear in the last meeting?
They were.
Look, I've been looking at... We could use one. I'm not sure if it'll be that... That they were wanting for that.
You want to move that?
He was like a team leader.
We were looking into the whole of that. Did you ever find that?
Maybe we could send something to them to think and come to the next one.
Yeah.
Okay. A discussion for... With the board of selectmen for the planning board secretary and commander of the jurisdiction of the planning board. I think we should set up a meeting with the selectmen. Maybe get them to come to our meeting where we go to base. And as this is the only elected board in town that doesn't select a secretary within themselves, I think that that's something that we need to do.
I'll move that.
We want to... See if we can go to the next selected meeting or...
Sure.
What is that?
I don't think we'd make the next one.
Who's responsible for hiring the secretary now? Who's responsible for hiring the secretary now for the board?
It was coming underneath the regulatory board. Building inspector, I believe, isn't that?
That's a problem.
Yeah, because we're elected and we should be picking our own secretary. I mean, the board of health picks their own secretary. The finance committee picks their own secretary. Yeah, we should have that.
Yeah, we probably would.
I'm not suggesting that we change our secretary. I'm suggesting we change the way the secretary gets hired.
But yes, I agree with that. I would like to be put on the board of selectmen meeting.
For the next selected meeting, probably we'll try to get it. Is that next week, Charlie?
Yeah, it's on the table. The agenda's already been posted.
Yeah. So maybe we try for... Maybe the next two weeks after that.
Maybe 24.
24. So maybe we try to get on the 24. Okay, ask your own status. I've reached out to John Bracke and his family. Still haven't heard anything back. I think maybe at this time we need to reach out to the new town council and see if there isn't something that we can do to push this along.
Well, that sounds ridiculous.
We just get kicked out.
I'd motion that.
I'll reach out to him.
Do you need a second? Do you need a second? A second.
I'll go with the fail, but it's okay.
All right.
One, so you, you are reaching out to the...
Yeah. And then subdivision control, 235, 16. Did we post that for the, for hearing, Joanne?
I'm sorry.
I don't think we did.
That would be in the Health Act Express ads, remember you were gonna look at those ads. Did we post the A and R change?
Well, you said that you would get back to me with the wording that you wanted, the language, for the two bylaw changes that you wanted to do, but I never heard anybody on that. Here at the last meeting that we had, you said that you wanted to get in touch with me for that wording.
So we need to do the wording for the...
You wanted to give me the wording.
All right.
I wanted to put it to you sometime.
We won't make the next meeting.
Okay, so we got to the next one?
Yeah. But that's a, it's a regulation change, so it's not tied to the town.
Tell me, do you? It's different from the other ones?
This is a regulation change from the board. We do a hearing for that and then we do that. But the other one is, we have a hearing for the first time. I'll work with you on that.
Okay.
Okay, we took care of the bills. So did the minutes. Everybody, the council, take a look at the correspondence.
We have, well, we get it for a discussion. Are we doing a discussion then? Because correspondence and discussion might be a little bit of a sand sometimes, is that all right?
Yeah.
Ahold Leanne, Carrie Butler, who has sent a message to Joanne, and it states, this is again, Ahold, it says, "I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but just had a question regarding wetlands. I'm not sure of what I'm seeing, but I have attached the 2007 plan at the site, as well as the newest plan by the new developer. It seems that from 2007 to the newer 2019 Anrad wetlands done, that the wetlands area changed." I believe they did within the, just a little bit within the new FEMA bylaws. Let me do my press. Just a little bit, not a ton of it, but a little bit. So yes, Carrie, if you're watching, they have. I think the, I don't know. I think the 2019 Anrad wetlands represented on the newest site plan will expire in February 2022, which is six months away. The newer plan showed dwellings right on top of areas that were deemed as wetlands at one time. Also, the placement of the subject system area seems close to the Title V buffer area. I was wondering if it would be, maybe be a good idea to have the wetlands redone. We looked at now before any new plans are accepted. I know the wetlands shown on the newest site plan may not expire for six months. However, I'm guessing it will be about that long before anything will be started anyway. That whole area, including where the river crosses, Haywood Street, as the town knows, is very wet and swells up even with the slightest of rains. What this developer is proposing is a lot of construction disturbance of a very sensitive wet area. I know there are guidelines, et cetera, that are put in place to follow to deal with wetlands, watershed. However, Mother Nature always has plans of her own. I think this really needs to be carefully done as it won't only affect the proposed multifamily development area, but also the river that directly abus it, and the land, animals, and roadways in that area that the town already cannot afford to fix. I understand growth is inevitable and the developer owns the land and can try to develop it any way he chooses. However, even if requirements are met at the end of the 2020, 21 units shoved into that land will have more, many more permanent consequences on this community besides things caused by wetland issues. I don't have a lot of knowledge about these things, but are just a few, there are just a few things I noticed and wanted to ask about. Thank you for your time.
Do they have a pause on that anymore?
No. Are you trying to commit to that?
Yeah, you can commit to that.
And he's, he, um... Joanne, did he cancel?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was here for the last meeting.
Right.
He didn't have a call. He had a meeting for a discussion. I'm not saying he's coming after this one.
The other correspondence is from, from Booth. We have the HDA from Flower and Soul.
You have somebody here for Q and A.
This is, I'm worried about the HLA, are you still on that one?
Yeah.
So is anything, a firm man or anything out on this now, or because you didn't show, what's going on?
No, what happened is the engineer had asked to come in informally the last meeting to go over what they're thinking about doing. But we didn't have a forum, so he said he would try to come back this meeting, but he didn't, didn't make it, so.
So we decided keep watching it and keep looking?
Yeah. But he wasn't presenting something, he's coming in to just talk about it. He's talking about maybe just a couple of houses. So, but he's not, you know, he's not here tonight.
So as we don't worry about anything yet?
Yes. And if he does come in, then, I mean, it would be, wouldn't be, wouldn't be a discussion, a decision made, you're saying that?
Okay. Great, thank you.
Can you start this one?
Yeah.
And someone say a part of me. A good one. Is anybody else here for Q and A?
No.
So we have a proposed plan?
Uh, yeah, I don't even want to talk. But, uh, many, many consulting that they have, Mary, they have, the owners, that's a huge complication. We are proposing the addition of two small buildings towards the back of the property that I think we had a little problems.
Yeah, I suppose we're a little bit of a different one.
Back in 2014, the original owner, I mean, he had two something for $12,800 square foot, two-story building, that expired, we're gonna substantially cut back on the two small, 1,200 square foot buildings apiece, so it's over about 2,400 square feet.
Looking at the whole report, sir?
Exactly, so if you look, it's literally the extension of what's there. There's a driveway between the back and around.
It's just extended from that.
Yeah, that's a wild one.
Yeah, it's a wild way to go there.
So they're saying there's 20 feet wide, 60 feet deep, two buildings, so 1,200 square feet apiece. Looks exactly like the current building, it's outside access, no doors. It's at the very back of the property, you can't see, but you can see, but we're at capacity, we're designing for larger units, and so provide those units. And 75%, this is kind of a fact, fact on itself, or 75% or more typically of the tenants at the facility draw over three miles of that site, specifically the residence of the town it's in. And it helps get, you know, when people are selling their home, they get cluttered up. Stay in your home, right? Helps get cluttered out, which means a higher sell value, a higher location access. It's good for everybody. We don't draw and see services at all. So we're hoping you can give us an approval. I understand, as Joanne mentioned, there has to be a 30-day period for all the departments to be able to review it. I'm just wondering if there's a possibility, so if you would subject to there not being any objections from those. I'm claiming, I'm not claiming here, but if we could save a little time, it'd be great. So if there's an objection, then we come back. Thus, it would be obviously a subject to no objections or just sets on existing conditions that people were given off site management.
So you're not proposing repayment?
Uh, just on the either side of those two buildings, so the people have been accessing the unit.
On the other side?
Yeah, yeah.
Is paved all the way down now?
Yes, you can ramp around the buildings now, or so the buildings are ready to start, or it depends on the payment. So there'll be two strips of 20 feet wide by 16, basically the extent of the building. There shouldn't be any smaller water issues, it's a bit smaller footprint than was originally provided from the 2014 site plan. We're using existing swamp sewer, there's a huge basin back there. It's gotta be 50 feet deep, it's like a canyon out there.
There's always water running for about two minutes.
The back there, it's all drains on the back of property.
No, I said, there's always water running for about two minutes after drainage.
Oh, I was actually out for today, but...
But I have to do a test on it today.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, it'd be very well, very well.
So it looks like you have five large units and four small ones in each building, is how it is?
Correct, there'd be five 10x20s, and at the front end of each of those would be four, actually, there's three 5x10s, and then I think one on the side, 10x5, so it saves a bit of work.
These all slide on the ground with the 400 block. But they propose a sub-boat, what, 400?
The, I think the original owner had two-story prime control, two-story control back there. I don't know how they put that thing back there. Because of that crevice or?
They were gonna be up against it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see how you can actually take care of foundation with that thing in there.
How many can it form on?
Yeah, yeah, we, 12,000 square foot, it was right on the edge, I think actually it projected outward into that. And I guess, I could be wrong, but that would be extremely costly to do.
I don't think it actually went into right at the edge.
Yeah, so either way, they get the quarters in there. This is obviously much more modest, but it'll sort of provide a much-needed position to it. There's no code violations, it's on by us currently that we're aware of. And I'm not sure, I was at a part of a meeting back in Jan, on January 21st. I'm not sure if it was a zoo, because it came out of this water.
Yeah, the issue was about this project?
Yeah, there were no objections at that time, they accepted it, and they wanted to go to planning to get a sound approval. So at that time, I think, to confirm that there's no objections to our site plan at that time.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that it's a formality we have to send.
Right, right. But at that time, I don't know who was president.
Helen.
You were president.
Thank you, there.
Who's this?
Engineer, remember, he presented this book.
Those, those, those buildings didn't have foundations?
Right.
Pardon? Buildings that have foundations?
Which ones?
The ones that were called, they came with the wall?
It's quite possible they were, they were twirling around with them, they're called mass units, they're...
Oh, yeah.
But, oracles? Why, they're sort of, they're, they're anchored to the ground, and you can't just move when you can't list those. When they roll off on cars or trucks, this is actually, they don't have to see that about the age of the material there. We figure, for the money, you know, just to the same, it's actually a little bit of an out across effect. If you're traditional building, it is something without foundation.
Right.
Because of the engineering costs involved for mass units.
That's all I remember, I don't, you know, I mean, I mean, and they were like, they weren't the same thing as I said, it was just...
Right. They were, they would be quicker to put up, but more, so much more, the cost, which would shock us. We would think something to sit on the ground with a foundational site work, but because of the engineering, each one has to be engineered, each 10x20 unit has to be individually engineered and directed, which creates more engineering fees and labor fees and...
Chivers is a throw.
Yeah.
But which is, I guess, that's a direct for the same thing.
So it just keeps in line with everything?
Yeah.
Well, I'd be prepared to say that unless somebody came to us with any complaints from other boards, but we'll sort of wait that time, Harry, it's sort of like my opinion. Like, just have to come back and make sure that everything's okay.
Or we could, so there's a 30-day, I'm not sure when the 30-day began. Did we file against last week?
I have no, I think so, so...
I don't, I don't know that we would have to come back. If you can present it to us, we don't have it, I mean...
Well, I don't see, I don't mind coming back, I just, I'm just wondering if it could be done. If there's no objections, then you accept the subject to objections, there are none, then it's accepted as the 30th day. So everyone's covered, so if there's an objection, it's not approved, if there's no objections, then it's proved on the day of the 30th day of the expiration date.
47 days.
Of August, yeah.
So, so what day did it come in?
The 27th.
And we sent everything out?
Yes.
To the boards and, yeah, we received any back?
Yeah, I think, um...
To the third of the actions of?
40 half, had no comments, and it was, you know, whatever, it was a trial.
So the 45 days runs out?
Until September 10th.
Well, it's 45 days.
Yeah.
We have 45 to add.
It's till September 10th.
So our first meeting in September would be within that.
Maybe what we should do is, if the board has known we received any complaint, that we should come in, and if not, we'll have it on the agenda to make it approved at that point. And he wouldn't have to come unless that's...
It's not gonna make any injections to that board.
What more on it, that's my opinion?
My opinion is, you know, we proved the other one, but the big building, we're not gonna let it last one. We just keep it in line for today. Well then, because I don't think the 30 days would be our next meeting.
Also, I think that might be a little bit tough on for travel expenses and planning, if we go all the way up to that and say, oh, you know, it's kind of up in the air until that 30th day. If we do what you asked, which is approve it now.
Well, unless you get, unless you get all the stuff back before the 30th day.
Right. Basically, the travel, I appreciate your concern, it's more the building season that I'm concerned about, you know? We're trying to get it in for later.
Right.
And...
Cool, we're meeting on the 2nd, so if everybody has to have something in by the 27th of August, then, or even the 31st of August, our meeting. then, or even the thirty-first of August, our meeting's on September second.
We could vote it out, yeah. There's no waiting period after we vote.
So, so when it's twenty-seventh is the one day expiration is?
Yeah.
A couple of days later is the vote, and I guess it's not a big difference. So I have to wait, anyway, till the twenty-seventh, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
It doesn't seem to be any objections, so.
It's, I guess, what if we get everything back, and there's no objections?
No.
And not, and they have all kind of guys. Um, but in getting back to their business, I'm just trying to say, just in case, if, if they do, if they're able to contact, like the fire department, say, hey, there's an injection. So the good one, obviously, correct. Um, and they came back next week, everybody's good with it. Can you say, well, then, we voted to approve it, the subject's been no objections, and we're good to go. We don't have to come back on the twenty-seventh or the second, whatever, times to start.
Do we still have to wait the thirty days?
It's, it's subject to, it's, it's subject to, then respond to the thirty days or so.
Yeah, so in other words, it wouldn't, even if you approve it, subject to the thirty days, it's not approved right now, it's approved on the thirtieth day if there are no objections. So then you can vote that now, then it's as a case, then it's done.
I mean, personally, I, I feel more comfortable just voting on September second.
Okay.
You know, everything's bad, just, you know, we can get everybody with time.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, yeah, but just.
No problem. Um, and may, and the judges of the board, will they see?
I don't assume they will.
Sure. So, uh, wait to hear from.
Well, no, you just go, you can, you know, they get a row, and they're all back, just a couple of Q pack in the back, and it's all set. A little drain break, a little drain break. There's other projects that have to do that.
They're, they're paving, they're, they're.
Yeah, I'll chill brow. Should the payment stopping in the, uh.
No, I have to grab, so the building, there's gravity on it.
They're proposing a, uh.
So, so.
Propose.
No, we don't want to break things up later. Nah, I'm really second to that. If you brought something up later.
I mean, my only concern is to, the turn rig is to find something that's. Will you come between the two buildings?
Yeah, it's twenty-sixteen between us.
It, it should vary, oh, we have our department, the engineer takes it in the county.
Yeah.
What's that washout area, Washington? What's that washout area? Well, next next to the drain, there's a washout. Washout area, seven days.
In the back?
Yeah, behind the building.
That's a, it's like a canyon.
No, I just, it's a little basin there. It's just a proposed washout area.
Right in the, in the middle?
No. I'm just curious, are people washing the camp?
No, I don't know.
Yeah, right there.
No, it's not for. It's usually the wrong, wrong, washout area.
Yeah, you can see it's a big straw.
Exactly, it's just like a straw. Yeah, yeah, it must be, yeah, it's got all the straw walls, okay, all the straw walls. I just, you know, you see all these straw walls here. That must be the construction, right? Keep the silt along the basin.
Yeah, it is also like a fast.
So is there any, like, um, pumpable, is there a start over there? Is that what they're asking?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Yeah, and that's why, you know, obviously, you know, you're not going to keep straw walls in.
That's not a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, that's just all, when you're doing all the site workers up here, you know? Uh, in puppy case, you know, make it centered around it, that's going to stay in this basin here. You know, that's what it seems like to me.
He must be construction there.
Yeah, a little bit.
Yes, I, I.
Like I said, there aren't any, I don't know, this is what they came to.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess I'll talk, maybe you can see it on the twenty-seventh, that you have to meet?
The second of September.
All right, well, thanks for your time, so.
So the travel.
Thank you.
Thanks for my meeting, Joanne. Goodbye.
Thank you. So you, you'll put him on my agenda for the second, right?
Yeah.
Thanks. Back to correspondence?
Yeah. Joanne, did you put all the correspondence from the last meeting on this one? So we took care of the signature, right? We took care of the signatures that we used, except for mine. And so, I don't know if we can file without him adding it later or?
I don't know, um. I'll have to check on that, I'm not really sure.
I'm sure there'd be another recording, see, if we went back, so.
No, I'm, I'm going to do them all, um.
May, maybe we.
I'm talking to the contractor. I, I'm, I'm sure.
I mean, maybe we can send him another email, see if he could come in and sign that.
I definitely am done.
And we got five on the east. Looking to get final.
When they find the last minute to build the last lot?
I, no, for road acceptance.
Yeah, so they might not build a last lot, but they're going to get road acceptance or go for it. There's a busha certificate, um, for safety and health certificate program on August eighteenth at ten a.m. I wish I could go, but I already have something going on.
Where is that?
It's, um, it's in Park, um.
No, location.
You want a location? Sorry. It is. Okay, I think it's Zoom, because it says a joint, uh, joint name. Thank you, hold on. Yep, Zoom presentation. Oh, it's going to be a fall program, beginning on September fourteenth. And from that, twenty-eight slots, so there's twenty-eight people who could get certificate graduate if they did this. And it gets one hundred and twelve hours of training, so it's, you can find out about taking it at Tap Rock in the morning, August eighteenth.
Let's put four.
OSHA, and probably all kinds of safety. Certification of safety and health. Then we just have one faucet street moving to the next meeting, and through storage, that street fourteen, that street that we saw earlier. Camera planning board. Already happened. Same one, few weeks, grid water lines. Where's one oh six, seven, one faucet street, Hanson? Is that up this end, or is it down the other end? Like closer to Hanson, I mean, or is it closer to about that one oh six, seven, one faucet?
Hanson?
Map two lot eight ninety-seven, almost seems like it would be on the halfback line.
Joanne, Charlie, do you have a request for online? Would anybody reach out to us on online?
I don't know, I did talk to him, right? That was what he suggested, I don't have anything from, from that side. Do you want to contact them?
Um, I guess they're looking for a lot of, I think that they want to be getting in touch with us. Charlie told me he. I have a question on the discussion members. I, I got a question on one specific one, and it didn't want to be answered, but the question we're asking other discussion members, we'd love to answer. What's that? Uh, the four fifty industrial plan, or plans, are they just existing plans that need the signatures added to it, or they're not changed or updated? They were planned, assigned previously, and they needed another set. Okay, so existing plans that are on there, do you think the extra signatures? Yeah, okay. Anybody else have anything else?
No, I'm just looking to that.
Mark, did you have anything that you want?
Just here for the fun. Okay, okay.
Rick?
No, nothing I can talk about. Nothing I can talk about, I have to refuse myself, so. I guess it's not going to be brought up, so. Major issue.
I'm standing on the way for the chat.
Somebody should.
I'm looking forward to it.
Did you see it on the sheet?
Huh?
Did you see it on the sheet, sir?
Yeah.
Six, seven sixteen, actually, station video, if you have a.
Uh, I have a, I have a two eighty-five home street, um. Hi, Joshua, this is, this was from July sixteenth, so Steve Hayward sent it. Josh Liddell, sorry I didn't get this to you earlier in the weekend. You may already know the new issue. I was hoping Mark, you did, that the burn would help, the burn helped with runoff, but during the rainstorm on the Friday, July ninth, there is still an issue. The big show now, the runoff is going to need a shot, the pool is on my home street.
You got some of ours, huh?
Yes, it's, uh, toward the end, I haven't gotten it yet.
Yeah, officially, no, because they're colored. So they show pretty drastic runoff, this. Which is the new, the current play log, or should we, I should, should we sit there?
No, that's a very, it's a lot of, lots of, you see. Wait, that way, huh?
All I did is tell them, I guess I just didn't do this on.
You didn't have any, was that, because you said you had some.
I have to refuse myself, you know?
Yeah, but if you refuse yourself, you can speak as a resident.
You sure?
Did you refuse yourself?
I'm giving myself control.
Joanne, did you remove Rick from the meeting? Ricky was thinking of talking.
I will.
Well, I guess, I just have questions.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want to be at the mic, so the camera can hear you properly?
Sure. I just have a question, why, you know, Joseph Bell in the back on the board?
I'm just seeing this right now.
Well, it's been out there for a while, and, you know, the conditions of the site plan pool was if any of our models on the home street, you're supposed to go back.
Correct.
You can't say you haven't seen the emails received, it's just, it's a nightmare. Even today, I can hear the cars just flashing as they go by, it's just, anyway. And then, another thing on the site plan pool is that it has to meet MCM for stormwater regulations. How does it meet that? I just wonder how it meets that. And who, who would have filed for that, or, you know, who said that it needs more more runoff regulations? And that was part of the conditions of this approval.
Yeah.
But he got the approval anyway, he got a builder. So it just kind of doesn't seem right that nothing's being done, but that's all.
He did.
He had to come back, he was supposed to come back to the board, didn't come back to the board, yeah.
You would have to call him back if there was a problem, and this is the first meeting that I've seen.
I think, I think he discussed, he was supposed to come back on his own if there's any problems. I think that's what they, we talked about.
I just, I wrote an ocean in the meeting minutes, um.
And the one that doesn't run on the home street is going right on the tracks. Even though it put a silt sock up out there to keep all the silt from running down, no drainage.
Which way is it going, like, is it going towards Umentalia, is it going?
No, it's going right on the home street.
Okay, and?
Like, it's two and a half acres of stormwater, and a grade like this, it just goes right onto home street. You can see in the videos, you see.
Okay, I'll look at them, but the one next. Okay, I'll look at them, but the one next to, like, so if he'll walk in it, let us, on the right?
On the right hand side, there's one under there, probably, after, you can try to make a little burn there, uh, instead of coming back with water like you suppose, you can try to make a little burn with some salt on it, and it ran, it made you out to the fence flooded, then it came on the street, plus it will still run around on the street anyway. I mean, we've had some nasty rain and that's, you know, it just doesn't work, you know, that, that...
Well, we just need to call him back.
No, he has to have site, you can't have the water run on the whole street and into the tracks, it has to be contained on that property.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So, um, so the motion was to approve the site plan at 285 Home Street, Halifax date of May 12th, 2021, with the condition of the following, the general notes on the plan, and number seven proposed paved parking to slope to surround the pervade, excuse me, pervade areas and will not drain out the whole street to follow MCM for construction site storm runoff control, and the applicant agrees that if there are any issues, he'll come back to the plan and go unwillingly and deal with those issues. So I think that...
I just wonder how, how does it meet MCM 4, it says that on the, how does it meet that, I brought that up at that meeting.
It generally is supposed to follow MCM 4.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, what he said it follows MCM 4.
So why don't we just do this, I will make a motion to have 285 Home Street come back into our next meeting, I think that's going to be a tight one. August 19th. It's a motion.
Yeah, I take it. Hold it there.
Aye.
I'm going back to it. I'm, I'm recusing, I'm not recusing.
See, easier. Um, so you want to call, um, email him back in or...
We'll have to work on the, uh, schedule for that meeting, Joanna.
Need before you...
Okay, anybody else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good.
All set for this?
Aye.